Welcome back, everyone. We are right on, right in time for our item 6.7, or 6:00 p.m. item, redistricting public hearing number three. Draft maps will be presented. And I know it's 6:05, we just, you know, we had to make sure that we fit in with the rest of the day. We're a little behind schedule and everything, so thank you for bearing with us. And I think the item is going to be introduced by, let's see. Carol.
Actually, Matthew Rothstein is for you.
Oh, okay.
This has been Use Project, anchoring our consultant, Margaret Long. So go ahead, Matthew.
Okay, sorry about that. Matthew, the ball is yours.
Okay. Good evening, Board. As you're aware, census data is updated every 10 years. And in the year following, supervisory districts are adjusted to ensure the barest possible representation for all residents. Today is the third of our four public hearings that are required by code. This is the one where we were going to get our hands dirty, dig into what the maps are, what the maps show. One of the things I want to start off by saying is you, as a candidate, are incredibly lucky to not only have Matthew, but to have Lon on staff. They have really been incredibly helpful in this process. We would not have been able to get here without them. And it's very unusual to have such high-quality people right at your fingertips. So I really appreciate having access to them and being able to use them. What we're going to do, start out first, is I just go through a quick PowerPoint and then talk about the process. And then again, we'll dig in the proposed maps that we have. Okay. So first, obviously, we're here on the map of the third one. I'm happy to be able to present it. We always go over the beginning of everyone, just kind of recap of what we're here to talk about. Matthew did a good job of explaining that we're here to draw the supervisory districts based on the 2020 census numbers that have been provided to us. When we are looking at this and how we draw the lines, we do look at it in order of priority, these items. We want the property, the area to be geographically contiguous. We want as best possible the integrity of neighborhoods, the integrities of cities and towns. We want to try to use to the best of our ability, identify the boundaries, whether that's a river, a street, a rail line, something that is already there in place. And we want to try to keep them as geographically packed as possible. We don't want them to be spread out. We don't have to have them long stretches. We don't look at favoring any political party. Don't look at who's supervisor of each district. And we don't look at the political makeup of each district. That's what we do not look at. When we look at 2010, these are the numbers that you came up with. And I am incredibly impressed that your percentage deviation is so low. Legally, we were required to keep that number at 10% or lower. So either 10% above or 10% below. Yours are under 1%, under .1% for all of your districts. That's almost a conservative. Because really, again, we have to keep it under 10% from a consultant's perspective. If we keep it under 5%, we're doing very well. Typically, 2% or 3% is what you'll see, just based on the fact that these census blocks are not, we're not looking at each individual, we're looking at census blocks. And so they contain a number of individuals in that block. So if we were to use the exact same maps we had in 2010 and just insert the new population numbers for 2020, this is what it would look like. It's really not that far off. You do have two districts, District 2 and District 5, that are a little over that 5%, well under 10%, which is what we're asking for. But they're, you know, they're a little bit high, but they're not that bad. The only thing we do have is we do have 116 individuals who, based on the fact that their census block was split in 2, don't currently assigned. They're considered unassigned. So they're both in District 1 and District 2.
May I interrupt for a quick section? Is it possible to see only the slide and not the next slide? Because then it really makes it so small that even on my computer from here, I'm struggling. I can see the numbers, but I can't hear you.
Thank you for letting me know that, because I can't see on my screen what's showing. So I appreciate you stopping me for that. So again, the 116, regardless of what we do, we do have to put them in either District 1 or District 2. But other than that, the numbers are not that far off, which is great. It's a great starting point for us. So when we're looking at the population of Lake County, in 2010, you were at 64,665. You've increased it by almost 4,000 individuals. Again, this is the current breakup of it. There's 116 unassigned. But if we were to have even districts, each district would have 13,632.6 individuals. So that's some of our goals, try to get as close to having each number in each district there. So what we are here to do today is look at whether we need to redistrict our populations, stay within that 10%, again, hoping for around a 5% or less. We also want to take and consider the comments that were provided by the public and the supervisors about what is community interests, where they want to see changes, where they want to have questions about, and how it was done last time.
If we could stop, I'm hearing that there's an echo on Zoom.
No, I'm good.
You're good? Okay, just checking, somebody said that there might be an echo.
So we were hearing there was an echo on Zoom much earlier today. Sam, are you aware of any Zoom difficulties? No.
No.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me, and I'm happy to pause. But the last thing we look at is community's interests. So in our last meeting, we talked about community's interests. And again, we took very careful notes. Thank you, Matthew, for taking very good notes and really listening to what was said. We also did receive some input online, which was a pretty thing. As we talked about before, there is a redistricting page on the Lake County website. There is access to email. We did receive some comments via email. The communities' interests that were identified are the Cobb Area Council off the Big Sin River, the Riviera's, Clear Lake, Kelseyville, wanting to keep the school districts intact, looking at the tribal lands, especially the area north of the Nies Lucerne cutoff, and keeping the business districts intact. So that's the Lake Shore Drive, Clear Lake. Everything that was provided to us as a community of interest, we consider. What I'm going to show you now is why some of them are not necessarily good options and why we can't consider and keep them, community interests together. But want to make it clear to anyone who distributed, everything was considered. We looked at, and Lon, again, was wonderful in allowing us in real-time to look at every option. But as you see, some are not possible. So looking at draft map number one, keeping all of Clear Lake together. If we were to do that, keeping all of Clear Lake, which is community of interest together, our numbers would be off 22% for District 2 and 19% for District 1. That's above the 10% that we're allowed by law. So if we were to do this, we would have to do a lot of other significant changes to other areas in order to make it even out. And in the committee and discussing with it, it did not seem like a viable option. Again, we want to present everything to you so you can see our thought process when it comes to this. Another draft map that created some boundaries that were a little off the percentage deviation we'd like, but is open to the board's consideration, is moving the blocks along Lake Shore Drive from District 1 to District 2. Again, that created District 5 and District 2 having a pretty significant deviation, not up to 10%. So again, this would be an allowable map. But we would want to make findings about why we are having such a large deviation in order to do that. So again, that was moving of the blocks on Lake Shore Drive from District 1 to District 2. We did get some comments regarding the Kelseyville area and the concept of moving all areas east of Kelsey Creek and north of Kelseyville, District 5. This includes Riviera Heights, Soda Bay, Steel, Head Drive, and Gaddy Lane. And this, again, would legally be allowed. But as you can see from District 4, it would get very close to that 10% and would probably require some findings in order for us to justify doing that or looking at making some modifications in other districts to accommodate it. And again, our concern was, when we looked at this, making those accommodations in other districts would break up community's interest or didn't make legal sense for us to move forward on. And the last one that we kind of worked through and then came to a conclusion as a committee that it's probably not the best option, but again, presenting for you, is moving only Riviera Heights from District 4 to District 5. And that's the area west of Lakeview Estates Tribe. Now, we do have a proposal on one of our draft maps that we're proposing does move Riviera Heights. But as you can see, the numbers here were over 5%. And so we felt that just alone doing this act was probably not beneficial to redistricting. So we did include that in one of our draft maps. So we have other offsets to accommodate those numbers. So we'll get to those in a second. Just, I want to finish off my PowerPoint before we get draft maps that we are recommending a review of. We have one additional public hearing, which will take place on November 30. That will be during the board meeting at 9:00 a.m. We're, I actually don't know if it's a board meeting day, but it's a special board meeting day. So we'll be doing it at 9:00 a.m. That's when we'll be actually adopting the draft map. And so that will be where we present the final form in ordinance form to get that amendment to the code, to get that done. That gets us done well ahead of December 15 deadline. And I know when we first started talking about that, that December 15 deadline was, seemed like it was coming way too quickly. But again, you have fantastic staff that powered through a lot of very complex data to make this possible. So we're looking strong to get that done. Again, as I said, we still have the information. After today, we will still consider anything you send to us. But again, it's a little late for us to make significant changes because we don't want to have an opportunity to do that again. But we will consider everything that's provided. But more importantly, everything we're providing today, including the PowerPoint and the draft maps, are all available online. And so if members of the public can't read the PowerPoint because it's too small or they're not in the boardroom to see the blown-up maps, you can go on there and get a very close look of what we're looking at. So I'm going to stop sharing for this and then go into my next share. Now, the next share are the five maps that you have presented for you on your board. I'll go through them in detail about what each of those are. And then you can look at kind of what five options that we, as the group working on it, conceived as viable options. Again, you have Lon present here today. And once I'm done going through the five maps that he drew up, I will turn my shares over to him. And he can actually in real-time make adjustments that you would like to see what it looks like. Just so you know, we have probably tried every adjustment you were going to look at. So we may be able to tell you in advance why it can and can't work. But you know, if there are little tweaks that we're looking at making, he would be available to do that. So let me share. One moment. Okay. Does it confirm? Tell me if you can see the maps. Okay, give me the, okay. So this is option one. Option one changes the map area north of the Nies Lucerne cutoff and along the Big Sin Road. It moves Riviera Heights from District 4 to District 5, and it moves the unassigned area to District 1. You can see the numbers under the option area of what that does for each district. Percentage-wise, it keeps everything at 5% or under. District 1 will be off by 1.68%. District 2 will be 5.03. District 3 is 1.76. District 4 is 3.4. And District 5 is 1.73. So that is what this contemplates. Option two, again, changes the area north of the Nies Lucerne cutoff and along the Big Sin Road, moves Riviera Heights from District 4 to District 5, moves the unassigned individuals to District 1. But we added additional blocks to the Clear Lake from District 2 to District 1. And the reason we did that is because it evens out the numbers a bit and takes the number for District 1 to only being off .72%. District 2 being off 4.07%. District 3, 1.18. District 4, 8, 3.40. And District 5, 1.73. So with that little tweak, we were able to get the numbers well below the 5%, which is ideal. And we did that again by moving additional blocks in Clear Lake from District 2 to District 1. I'm going to keep going unless there's questions, and then we can maybe chat about it afterwards. District, the third option, again, moves the area north of the Nies Lucerne cutoff and along Big Sin Road. It moves the Riviera Heights from District 4 to District 5, moves unassigned to District 1, and moves Clear Lake area south of 18 and east of Highway 53 from District 2 to District 1. And again, this is, gets our numbers incredibly close. It is, District 1 is 1.78%. District 2 is .87%. District 3 is 3.40. District 4 is 2.56. And District 5 is 1.73. So again, from a consultant perspective, those numbers are very solid in terms of their deviation and are very supportable in terms of moving forward. Option four changes the area north of the Nies Lucerne cutoff and along the Big Sin Road. It divides Riviera Heights, as discussed, from District 4 to District 5. And it moves the blocks south of Lake Shore Drive in Clear Lake from District 1 to District 2. It also does the unassigned individuals, moves them to District 2. So for option four, the numbers are not as good. Most specifically, District 2 is now 5.91 above the deviation. District 1 is 2.57. District 3 is 1.78. District 4 is 3.40. And District 5 is 1.73. Now, I'm saying all these numbers, and I know you probably can't keep track of them. They are on the maps that are provided. So you can look at them if you have any questions or would like to go back and review them. I just want to make sure that they're on the record for moving forward on this. And the last one is option five that's being presented.
One second. We just lost the projector.
It went to sleep, it's done.
Don't blame it. You guys had a long day.
Is it on that television right there?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. It's hot, it's overheated.
And we burnt it out. Can everyone see the monitor over here? At where? Because if that's the case, Lo can, I can share. Do you have it up there?
I don't, but I can see.
Okay. And then you have yours. I think it's still projecting online because I can see, okay. So we can at least, okay, okay.
We'll let that cool down.
Right. I think we're good to continue, though. Yeah, one second there. Good? All right. Margaret, you can continue. Thank you.
Thank you. So then the last option we're providing is the change of the area of the Nies Lucerne cutoff, Big Sin Road, and then moving blocks south of Lake Shore Drive from Clear Lake, in Clear Lake, from District 1 to District 2. And it also moves all the area east of Kelsey Road and north of Kelseyville from District 4 to District 5. And this, and also unassigned areas to District 2. This one, again, is not a recommended one, but we did get a lot of comments on the Kelseyville area. And so we did want to present a draft map for consideration. This one has a pretty substantial deviation in District 4, which goes down to 9.53%. And it's legally acceptable, but it's a very large deviation. It also has District 2 at 5.9, District 5 at 4.59, District 1 at 2.57, and District 3 at 1.76. So while this one's legally allowable, and we did get a lot of comments on it, it is not one that we are recommending, but we are offering it for consideration. And with that, I will stop sharing my screen and allow Lon to share if it comes up. But we're open for questions.
Excellent, thank you. Jessica?
So thanks, Margaret. I'm curious as to why, I know that there was some input for the Riviera Heights to be included in District 5, but I'm curious why only option 5 has, the area is close to Kelseyville town. That's specifically important to me because that is a community of interest that doesn't have representation as an unincorporated town. While the HOA has very strong leadership, it's very cohesive. It does align with the other HOAs. But I feel like keeping the town of Kelseyville together is much more appropriate for their representation.
And I'm happy to respond to that. And we did get comments on that, which is again, why we presented option 5. And the question as to why we didn't include in the other options, we tried to include it in every option. That was part of kind of the process we went through. But in doing so, and I will kind of ask Lon to speak to this as well, it broke up other districts in a way that we couldn't do, either through census blocks or other communities of interest that, you know, because again, the districts, the way they aligned, it took areas that we couldn't break up. We can, if it's the board's pleasure, start using option 5 and again, have Lon make some of those adjustments to see if we can get those numbers to be more coherent with what we're looking at. And we're happy to do that at your pleasure. But again, we did try. We did look at all those options to try to keep that because we did receive several comments regarding that as a community of interest. It would qualify as a community of interest, and it's what needs to be considered as a community of interest. But at your pleasure, we can pull up option 5 on a map and look at, have Lon walk through what can be done to make that a viable option.
I just didn't see an option where Riviera Heights wasn't moved to District 5.
Correct, that is correct. And the reason was, is we did determine that to be a community of interest. And moving it did not significantly change the numbers to where it made anything, any of the other options not viable. So again, that's your pleasure. We're happy to look at an option that's not included. But it didn't change the numbers so significantly that it was appropriate to divide it after it was established as a community of interest.
So, okay. So one community of interest. I don't see how both of them can be considered a community of interest, but one of them is excluded. So I'd love for us to look through the map together.
Absolutely. And again, to be clear, we didn't exclude any of them. There's a lot of communities of interest. We looked at every single one of them. Some of them, such as the city of Clear Lake, we could not keep it in one district without throwing all of our numbers off. So we determined that we had to divide that one up. Kelseyville was one that, again, we determined that we could keep it in there, but the numbers were pretty significant. So let's look at it. Lon, I know Lon has it up right now. Lon, do you have any suggestions on what we can move around in order to get those numbers?
Well, we're, just to give you a general overview of what you're seeing on this map, the light gray lines are the census blocks. And those are kind of the basic building blocks for the districts. Those are the boundaries that we need to follow because those have the population counts. These colored boundaries represent the different districts in this particular plan. The one I have pulled up is sort of a compilation of the ones that Margaret already went over and covers most of those areas. And I'll just give a quick overview before we get into that. So one of the, one north of the Nies Lucerne cutoff, and I apologize, it's this background map that's a little slow to draw. It's this area here between Highway 29, Nies Lucerne cutoff, and Rodman Slough. And the reason that one was moved is because one of the guidelines is not splitting up the tribal lands. And currently, Robinson Rancheria has a little bit of land over here spanning Highway 29. And currently, the district is split. So this was just an attempt to keep all of that land in a single district, move it all into a single district. The next one is going to be along Big Canyon Road. I'm going to turn off this background here.
It's thinking really hard.
There, okay. So what you're looking at here is, and this one was the Cobb Council, Cobb Area Council. The boundary kind of clips off this corner. This is, if you're familiar with the area, this is where Big Canyon Road makes a hard bend, and Edoa Springs Road heads off to the west. And the Cobb Council, Cobb Area Council, kind of cuts off that corner. So we were trying to pick up just these couple of blocks. It's only three people. But move these blocks over into District 5 to cover that area. And those are the two that are included on every one of the plans. For the Soda Bay area, you can see currently, the district, you know, District 4 picks up all Riviera Heights, Soda Bay, Gaddy Lane, that whole area. And if we include everything east of Kelsey Creek, so we use this as the boundary, the problem is, as we had said, it throws these numbers way off. And these right here are the key numbers you want to be looking at. And keeping these under 10% plus or minus. The problem with including this in every plan is that District 4 then has to pick up population somewhere else to make up for that. And the only place where there's any real significant population, because you're looking at probably about 1,000 people in here, I believe, is going to be south of Highway 29 in Kelseyville. So Crook Shank, Live Oak, Kelsey Creek Drive, all of those areas would then have, you know, either those areas would have to be moved into District 4, or you have to go all the way up to the north end and then start getting into Blue Lakes, Winter Springs, Bachelor Valley, and possibly even Upper Lake, and moving those into District 4. So it's just a matter of where, if we want to keep this area and balance it out, then we have to pick up population somewhere else for District 4.
Can I offer a suggestion for District 4?
We can do that, we can do it live right here and see what the numbers do.
So by the way, I want to say I've been looking at this mapping software or system. Really appreciate the work that's been done. I don't know if it's automatic, what was shipped to us, or if you had to put a lot of work. But getting that level of detail with the numbers for each census tract is really useful to be able to kind of look around and see what can be changed, what can't be changed. So really appreciate what we're looking at here.
It is automatic, and you'll see that in just a second. It all does it on the fly.
I love it. I was thinking in District, so I'm looking at the area versus people as well. And I'm looking at District 3, which is such a huge area to travel. And so in my opinion, I think that the larger your area is to travel, then it's probably a good idea to see if we can reduce the number of population, obviously trying to stay within that 5%, if that's possible. Is it possible to go 29 all the way to 20 and all the way east to the border? And what would that do? Because District 4 is missing 1,200 people in comparison, and District 3 has 242 more. Just a thought to try and see if we can alleviate the traveling time for a supervisor to have to travel that entire distance in District 3.
This may take a couple of steps to get it.
It's not a huge amount, I know that. But it looks like a good geographical barrier.
Yeah. So what, I'm going to, right now, I'm going to go up and use 20 and 29 as a boundary. for the...and see what that does to our numbers. So this takes it up...we've got a couple more right in here. Nope, we'll be in that one anyway. Okay, so you can see by moving that boundary all the way up to Highway 20 and to 29, that brings you down to, from 9 point, I think this was negative 9.5, now it's 7.3.
Is this Option 5?
This is a modification of Option 5.
Okay. And so then if we went back to Kelseyville, and north of Soda Bay stayed in District 4, and south of Soda Bay stayed in District 5?
Up to, where about the State Park?
Yeah, so the State Park would be in District 4.
So that, this, a little difficult to see. I've looked at these so much, I can tell where these block boundaries are even without roads drawn on there. So it's, I apologize if it's a little confusing, but let's...okay, so here's the State Park. If we follow Soda Bay Road and then use the State Park, the eastern edge of the State Park as a boundary, that does this to our numbers. I know one area that was specifically brought up was Steelhead, wanting to move Steelhead Drive back into District 5, but this keeps it in District 4.
So this is a viable option. The numbers are still off more than, again, as the consultant, from a consultant's perspective, we would like. If this is what, you know, if this is where the board would like to lean, I mean, I would, we would make some findings, you know, and make sure it's very clear as part of the resolution why this is being done. But keeping Kelseyville together is an appropriate reason and rationale to do that based on the fact that it is an identifiable community of interest. So we can make those findings. Lon, is there anything else in looking at this modification of Option 5 that you could recommend to reduce the numbers in District 2 and increase them in District 4?
If we go, if we move this boundary from the creek over to Gaddy Lane, but then you're going to have people on one side of Gaddy Lane in one district and the other side in another district.
And that's how it is now, and that's not working.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else besides that you can contemplate?
What's that? Oh, would it be contiguous if the next block over from the State Park, the next two blocks, where it has 82 or 80?
This area here?
Yeah.
The problem is that then you're splitting a subdivision. I think it's like if you have a state subdivision.
Okay.
The subdivision, let me turn on the parcels so it gives you a better view. I believe this is the subdivision boundary over here. And the problem is that's not a, there's no block that runs along there. So it would have to be half the subdivision, but yes, we can move...you're talking about this area right here?
Yeah, are the, would, are they contiguous?
Yeah, this is all contiguous with the State Park. And that does, that brings our numbers closer to 5%.
So in this model, does it divide the subdivision up?
It does, yes.
But what about doing the whole subdivision?
Again, then you can't because the subdivision boundary is a bit to the east of where this line currently is, and based on the block configuration, suddenly it's going to pick up a good portion of Riviera Heights.
In the other maps, though, this was carved off of Riviera Heights.
No, on the...
On the Option 1, on the 1 through 4, it was just Riviera Heights and not the Soda Bay?
It was similar to this one. It went to, where is that? It used that same block boundary, it just went the other way with it. It picked up a lot of the actual Soda Bay subdivision along the lake shore.
Yeah. But what if we did that whole Soda Bay subdivision?
Picked up all of these, moved them in, yeah. So basically go back to it, but back to what it currently is, or back, keep the boundary closer to where it currently is. So this would be, this would involve moving Riviera, just Riviera Heights and a few houses along the edge of this other subdivision into, back into District 5. And then keeping the areas along Gaddy, moving the areas along Gaddy Lane into 4, or back from 4 to 5, rather, excuse me.
So this way, Kelseyville, Gaddy Lane, and Riviera Heights are in District 5?
Correct. It's everything north of Soda Bay Road in the Soda Bay area would remain in District 4.
What do you think, Tina?
But then you're dividing Blue Lakes up, though, because one side of the road would be mine and the other side would be EJ's.
Yeah, I didn't really see, couldn't really make it out of that, but if we can go back to it, I'd like to look at that.
Yeah, absolutely.
It would make sense for flooding and the issues that we work with flooding, but would it make sense that we're splitting, splitting it up?
Right. And I'm trying to see what part of it is split.
So this would follow the highway.
Your thoughts, I would have this side of the highway, you would have the other side of the highway?
In the Blue Lakes area. So yeah, and I think there are a couple of mobile home parks along the north side of the highway in there.
Yeah.
I believe.
And that's how Highway 20 is on the east as well?
Yeah, Highway 20 is currently used as a dividing line to the east.
Well...
Again, from a perspective of looking at it, from an outside perspective, looking at it to make sure it's legal compliance and that it's appropriate in terms of the code, you are using a natural boundary, which is appropriate, and it is keeping communities of interest in place. I would question District 2 being a little bit out of whack as well in terms of numbers and want to have a conversation about that, but this is appropriate for a, again, from a perspective of compliance with the requirements that we have.
Currently, what part of Scotts Valley Road does that, how far does that go out when it comes to Scotts? Because when I think of Scotts Valley Road, that goes, I think of District 4, just in my opinion.
I'm not sure exactly where it stops, but...
The current boundary is, let's see. Don't have a specific address, but it is...
But it's, I know where, I kind of have an...
I believe it's a bit north of the old campground.
Kelly's Campground?
I believe, I believe that's right in this area here, so I believe it's right around the Kelly Campground, the former Kelly family campground.
It makes sense, and I think that what we'll do is, if that's what we have to do in order to make the adjustments, I mean, I'll just invite, or the Blue Lakes people would have, you know, I mean, they might, you know, just ask, I mean, but they're all in the same, they would still be in the same district, but it would be split.
So Blue Lakes, do they go to the Upper Lake Town Hall?
Well, we don't have a representative currently, so technically...
But that's how they've been going, though? They've been, or not at all involved?
There hasn't really been any involvement. We've got one person, but he didn't, I think...yeah, should I? I think we could have this open, right? If she would, yeah.
I wasn't thinking about the MEX.
Diane Fridley, Target Register, Landmark Representative, the Register.
Sam, is the mic on?
Oh, Diane, if you can just move a little closer, thank you.
Maybe if I take this off. 20 years ago, we divided that area, the 20 Blue Lakes last, well, two census ago. And it was very, very confusing to the Upper Lake people, and they were very angry. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay.
Because you have 20, so the creekside would be in District 4, going on 20, and then the other side, where the springs, Bachelor Valley, would be in District 3. So the same thing at Blue Lakes, you're going to have one side of the road, like you say, District 4, across the street, it's going to be District 3. So just keep that in mind.
What I'd recommend is if we could look at District, District 2, and see if we can get those numbers a little lower and then potentially open it up for public comment. Once we've had the public comments, again, we can bring it back and continue to modify the maps based on what we're hearing.
Okay.
Because I haven't even looked at the other side of the county yet.
Sorry. So this currently, this boundary, the proposed boundary shifts the, these two blocks along, this is Lake Shore Drive right here. So the, basically what this does is put the business district along Lake Shore Drive, all within one district, District 2.
I love technology. So in looking at that, is there an area between District 1? Well, District 1 is, we can do some transfers. Is there any areas or neighborhoods within District 1 that can be moved over to District 2 without causing any disruption to communities of interest?
I've already spoken, so I'm waiting on Moak to speak first.
Well, what we're talking about there, splitting it up in Clear, you know, with the Clear Lake boundaries and everything it would go to, it's exactly how it's set up now for my district and yours, is that it is. One side of the street is District 1, and the other side of the street is District 2.
Correct.
So I don't think we're going to avoid that anyway, so...I don't have any specific comments or suggestions, you know, from anyone, we're open to that, so go ahead.
One of my suggestions is that on the east side of Old Highway 53, before Lake Shore Drive, that's kind of a little community back there behind the Crossroads Church. So let me see, where would that be in comparison to what we're looking at? I think it's, yeah, right where your mouse is, like to where it splits off to the right a little bit, yeah. I think that community back there is a similar community. And so maybe putting that together will raise District 1's numbers and decrease District 2's numbers, just to...
The problem that I see with that is if you look, there's one block that's going to be a problem, and that's this one highlighted in blue. See how it kind of snakes around here? And it's unfortunately with these blocks, it's kind of an all or nothing thing. So if you pick this block up, you're picking up everything south of Lake Shore before, between the highway and Old 53.
That is a very strange census block. Somebody needs to go back to the drawing board on that one. But if you go south...
Especially since a 50 mole tree runs down the middle there. I'm sorry.
That's right, that's right. If you go south of where that finger is coming right through that community, all that section...
Pick up these, start picking up some of these. Yeah, another option I just, I just saw is on the other side, south of Dam Road.
Yep.
If you use Dam Road as a dividing line over here, rather than Cache Creek. But, okay, so let's see, so we want to move, which areas? These blocks here?
That's what I was suggesting, yes. And again, just spitballing.
When you say the crossroads, that's the Crossroads Church right there on the corner?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right after you pass the village area.
So basically, everything except for that one fairly convoluted block does this.
I think that's better. Maybe not, yeah, no, that's better.
Do you, that, again, from a numbers perspective, that looks good. I can, we can justify it as a community of interest with shared, shared community interest. Do we want to try it before we kind of lock this in and open to public comment? Do we want to try Lon's suggestion of looking the south area? Or is this seem appropriate to the supervisors?
You mean the Dam Road suggestion?
The Dam Road suggestion, thank you.
Yeah, definitely like to look at it.
Do you want to include this change I just made with that?
No, I would think, I would think it'd be instead of.
Okay. Well, it certainly gets you under the 5%, barely.
The numbers aren't as good, but it, we just wanted to, you know, throw it out for discussion, does that make more sense from a perspective of supervisory districts having the line and we can have a creek dividing it off as opposed to kind of a community of interest that's undefined? It may. So again, I think we do want to look at those, those natural landmarks as a top priority to consider, and this one would do that. It gets the numbers to close, it keeps Kelseyville together. I think this is an absolute viable map.
I'm fine with that. Super supervisor, about the end?
I don't mind at all. I think it's got continuity. It's Old Highway 53 that hits Dam Road, then continues down Dam Road, so there's a little continuity to the connections. I'm kind of curious, what does it look like if everything from Lake Shore to Old 53 and Highway 53 was implemented? What that would look like?
Everything, everything in this area here?
Yeah, just to, just to kind of see what that looks like. I don't mind what I'm seeing here. I think it makes more sense than a random amount that we just did earlier. But I think that if we use the geographical main streets and highways, that could make sense as well.
Yeah, but actually now suddenly District 1 is in the positive instead of being a negative number.
He took a lot, he took a lot. And I'll, maybe I can get Red Bud back.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to ask, did we want to move it back to where the current boundary is here? Now, the only thing is that this is that one split district right here.
Right, right, right.
Split block right here. Look a little bit better. So that's what, that's what moving it...
And I was thinking back into District 2.
Oh, moving, moving which to District 2?
The Lake Shore Drive and Red Bud Park.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you wanted to move those to, okay, let's see.
Now District 1 is getting closer and closer to 5.
Yeah. So these were, let me, just because it's a little bit confusing. So move these two back to District 2.
Yes.
Yeah, that's where we just were. Okay, so this is, yes.
Yeah, that was quite a large gain from all those, that little...
Yeah, from this area over here.
Yeah, I think the Dam Road one is probably a better option.
So what I typically like to do again is see if we, the supervisors can kind of come up with a rough consensus on their preferred map, and then open it up to public to comment, and then again... public to comment and then again, bring it back. The map that I think we're looking at right now is from what I'm hearing is the preferred map, once we've figured out the District 1, District 2 dividing line. And then, but I'm open, I just want to make sure all supervisors have had a chance to comment on it and have preferred one to get their vote in there.
Could we go back, since now that we've done District 1 and 2, can we go back to District 4 and 3 and see what the numbers look like pulling Blue Lakes back out?
Okay.
Hold on, I think something's wrong with District 2.
Yeah, he hasn't been, uh, changed. Yes.
And, and all, any of those options, I, I think is good to equalize a little bit and I'll let Supervisor Simon.
I thought the change down to the Dam Road delineation there was the, you know, was probably the best, so.
Yeah, no, I liked it too.
The Dam Road one?
Mm-hmm.
I would con-
Not sure why I'd say those numbers are so far off, that was.
I think you, you got to give him back the Red Bud and that split district.
Yeah, I did.
Oh. Nope, I don't think so.
No, that's. I missed, I must have accidentally picked up something somewhere else.
Control Z?
Yeah. Now I'm going to, let's back it up till those numbers bounce out to where they're supposed to be. Okay, so, let's go back to. Moving everything south of Dam Road into District 1. And then, and then that, reset this back to where the boundary had been. So this is what we're still looking at on these. It, it, it undid that fix to District 4.
Was that both for the Blue Lakes area and the Heights area?
This was, oh, I, I forgot to undo the Heights, my apologies, sir. So let's see, we were going to take this back to. Okay, that, so that leaves the Blue Lakes in District 3 and makes the, makes these just suggested changes over here between 4 and 5. And that puts us under 5%.
Supervisor, does that, do you want anything further in this area?
I don't think we're good. I think everybody's satisfied.
Is that everything you want in Kelseyville? It's hard for me to really see.
Yeah, it's hard to tell.
Yeah, the dark colors.
Unfortunately, I can't change the color scheme on these boundaries, the.
But does this look like it's the Riviera and the Soda Bay?
Software won't let me. It just assigns them randomly.
Basically, you have all of Soda Bay and I have the Heights.
Okay.
And then I get Blue Lakes back?
You get Blue Lakes back.
Yeah.
Anything else the supervisors want to see or is there consensus that this, this map is the one we're going to open to public comment?
Good, good.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I, I, I'm, I'm good and I, I want to hear what the public has to say.
There's only one other small area. It's just tiny and I don't, if, it's just this, that little wedge, there's 40 people and 18 people. It's so close to Kelseyville Town right there.
This area here?
Yeah, that little, it's just very strange because everybody that lives there goes, you know, is part of the Kelseyville community. So those, yeah, I think that would, that makes more sense if that doesn't-
That's going to, that's going to move it up to, I believe, Renfro and Merritt is going to be where it's going to change that. Now, it does put District 4 a little bit over the 5%.
Okay. I guess we could go back then.
Any additional comments before we open up?
Unless you, unless you want to go a little further, not towards like the highway, but like up on Scotts Valley Road, if that makes sense, that way you could accommodate for the 40 or whatever it is.
How many people are actually up there though?
Yeah.
I don't know if there's a big population up there. Like 3?
So what are we talking about? Let's see.
What is that, kind of like that wave form line of the creek?
I believe that's a jeep trail coming down off of the hill here or coming out of this canyon, out of the White Rock Mountain, I mean, it's a jeep trail coming down this canyon.
Gotcha.
Yeah, there's not really that much to work with.
Oh, I can't see that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I tried.
I tried to save you on gas, CJ.
Well, you'd have to go out there anyway because he has one side of the.
Right. I'm out there.
It just makes sense to keep the community together.
Yeah.
No, it does. I agree.
Okay, I think, I think we're good. I think we are at a consensus. And so with that being said, I think we could open it up to the public? All right, is there anyone here that would like to speak? Diane?
Actually, I just have a question. Is there a way to show the current boundaries versus the new proposed on the map there?
Yes, right there.
Where are they?
In, in this, which area?
The whole thing, I think she's talking about.
Yes.
So, Mr. Chair, we do have one hand up in the Zoom room?
Okay. Let's see. Oops, sorry. Okay, one second, did you want to come up to the?
Yes.
Okay.
Dirk Sloten, Mayor Clear Lake, we applaud the boundaries and we would prefer Option 3. If there's any way that you need to make adjustments to our orderly boundary, we wouldn't mind to have a third supervisor representing the city of Clear Lake.
I didn't realize that. So Option 3, we give three supervisors to the city of Clear Lake?
Yeah, I didn't know.
That what you're saying?
Yeah. We'll have to look at that one, I just wanted to see.
It's still just between Districts 1 and 2.
Okay.
It just moves the boundary from the creek to 18th and then the city limits.
Yeah, I think there is a hand up. Mr. Belastros, you want to unmute and go ahead and give it forward to you?
Good, good evening supervisors, it's a pleasure and thank you for all your time and being here so late on such a long day. I just wanted to quickly state, my name is John Byasteros, I'm a resident at 4595 Gaddy Lane. My husband, Brian Fisher, and I submitted a letter on behalf of a member of neighbors in the area advocating the, exactly the, the inclusion of the neighborhood that Supervisor, Supervisor Pesca suggested being added to District 5 to maintain the community of interest of, of Kelseyville. I think most of you have seen the, the value in keeping that and acknowledged the, the need to keep that as a community of interest and we wholly support the steps you've taken and would like to express our appreciation to Supervisor Pesca for advocating on this behalf and your openness to making those changes. So really appreciate that, that direction that you're pursuing. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks. So is this the map that we're looking at as the best option because the Gaddy Lane is still the divide here but not the creek?
No, this one, this, here's Gaddy, that was, this is the current district boundary, sorry.
Oh, okay.
There was a request to see those earlier. It's, this line here is the new proposed boundary.
Okay, yes, perfect.
And here's Gaddy right here.
I don't see any other hands up in the Zoom room. Anyone else in the, well, actually, there is. Betsy, Betsy Khan, you can unmute.
Thank you, Chairman, and everybody here. I'm going to make two brief comments. I think you've done an incredible piece of work. I appreciate all the collaborative effort and the incredibly long day you've put in. And Lon Sharp is absolutely a rock star. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Are there any other comments or concerns or would anyone like to speak from the chambers? Hearing none, I guess we'll close the, we'll close the comments and.
So we'll put this map out then for the public to comment on until our next meeting? Is that how this is going to work?
So what will happen next is we will, if we get consensus from the board that Option 5 as amended during this meeting is the option, that is the preferred option, we will put it on the website, we will accept comments on it. We'll also use a surveyor to actually articulate the boundaries and prepare proposed amendment ordinance to approve it. It will come back one more time, additional comments can be made. However, when it comes back the next time, it's going to be in writing and it's going to be brought as, so that one is going to be a lot harder to make changes. So again, if there are changes that are contemplated, this meeting is the best place to do it. If we receive comments afterwards, we will consider them. If they're substantial enough, we can bring them back to the board for another meeting to review them. But ultimately, once we start drafting ordinance, it's going to be very hard to change. So we are really looking for kind of consensus today from the board members about which map you'd like us to finalize.
Okay, I know I closed up, I'll open it back up because I think there's a concern that.
Thank you, Supervisor Clint Crandall. Yes, when Mayor Sloten indicated that we liked the Option 3 part as a related to District 2 and District 1, we were assuming that you could apply that to District 5 for the rest of it, not in either order, but to just to adjust 1 and 2 and, you know, however Supervisor Pesca wants to do, and turn, Scott, excuse me, and you would like to do 3, 4, and 5, that's, that's fine, but 2 and 1, our, our preference would be to use Option 3 for District 1 and District 2, just to clarify that.
I think.
How much difference is it?
Yeah.
Well, what, yeah, what is the difference? I mean, because I was talking with Supervisor Sabatier on District 1 and District 2 and, you know, we looked at the two options there to get the numbers correct and it seemed like the viable option was to go on the Dam Road, so.
The difference that I see in the map that was just shown is you, District 1, would have get the Walmart Shopping Center and then the Cache Creek Apartments and looks like some of those paper parcels in the early numbered avenues is what I seem to have.
Hospital, the hospital and the Community College and all of that area as well.
Gotcha, yeah.
So the request is to use the boundary lines in the city of Clear Lake as articulated Option 3 to apply that to Option 5 amended in this meeting? Is that, does the board want us to look at that?
That's what I'd like, what Mayor Sloten and I would like to look at, yes. It seems like the numbers for between 1 and 2 are much more balanced that way as well. And 18th would take in the hospital, Connaught IED Center and Woodland College as well as the Walmart area and, and areas to the east in the avenues.
In fact, doing that, you get Districts 1 and 2 now have the exact same population by making that change.
Is it the board's pleasure to see that change?
So I, I'll say that I don't mind if that's the change that occurs. I just think, going back to my original statement that I made about District 3, I know that District 1 does have a large area all the way to the Napa Line going down Butts Canyon Road and then coming all the way up here and also going all the way down, what's that, the one that goes to the geysers? Can't think of it right now.
Socrates.
I, I just know that there's a lot of traveling area in that area and so I don't know that it needs to be equal, but at the same time, I, I'm perfectly fine if that's the way it stays.
Oh, I thought we had the consensus on the changes we made. You know, we asked, you know, is everybody okay with the changes we made? So going back, let's take a look at it, I guess. But what does that change for what you were trying to do with Kelseyville and other places? Won't change anything?
I don't think it changes anything.
No, it doesn't change anything up there.
No, it, it doesn't change anything. The only thing it would change would be within the District 1 and District 2 in the city of Clear Lake. And again, it's, it's the board's pleasure, both of them meet the legal requirement, but it's your pleasure which one you prefer.
Let's take a look at it, yeah.
So this is, this is used, these are the numbers using 18th and the city limits as the boundary. And this is using Dam Road as the boundary.
Where's the 100-unit apartment complex going to be?
Right off of Dam Road, just north of it. Yeah, it looks like that's all one census block with the apartment complex.
I don't have, I don't have a preference either way. I want Supervisor Sabatier to go either direction, so.
Yeah.
I don't have a preference either way. I want Supervisor Sabatier to go either direction, so...
Yeah. I will say my preference is the Dam Road just because, again, in density of area, I think it's easier for District 2 to cover a larger number of folks in a smaller region versus an equal amount of folks for District 1 having such a large area. So I will say that my preference is Dam Road.
That was my preference too when we had the consensus conversation.
Any of the remaining board members have a preference?
I'd have to leave it up to you.
No.
Fine, I'll look what you have, and I'll continue with Blue Lakes.
I think that'd be appropriate.
Yeah, they're all associated with Upper Lakes, so it makes sense.
So I hear that the modification that was just proposed is not the consensus of the board, so we would go back to the original Option 5 with amendments that was presented prior to public comment. Is that correct?
And it looks like that's what we're looking at?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a... What's the reason that the city of Clearlake wants to have the line there?
Supervisor District 1 Moak has been starting to become really more involved with the city of Clearlake over the last several months, and we like his input on all the projects that we have coming up. So the two Supervisors that are very involved in this city is a good thing for the city.
So would one of the options would have been the city...
That doesn't take... It's going to take everything out.
I do believe Supervisor 1 and 2 would both still have Clearlake and would both therefore have a hand in terms of city projects. And just to kind of be clear about it, looking at wanting a specific Supervisor over a district is not a grounds for modifying a boundary. Wanting multiple representation is understandable, and that can be considered loosely, but again, we want to make sure we keep the politics out and just really look at communities of interest and shared voices. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
I want to make sure... Yeah, it's still open, so we're just talking through here.
Yeah, do it now because it's easier to do it now.
Option 3 more evenly divides the number of representative... People that a representative has in each of those districts. It balances much more that way, but also that area, 18th South, is a pretty homogeneous area with the exception of, you know, some homes out to the east, but it has a block that is really, well, similar use. And I think it's... I like it, and I think the city likes Option 3, or at least as it applies to Districts 1 and 2, irregardless of who's sitting in your seats now or in the future. It's an homogeneous district. It's cleaner, in our opinion, and it balances the population in each of the districts the best. That's the other reason, certainly, that I have, and I think it's a 2.
I appreciate the conversation, but I like the Dam Road option. You know, when we talk about delineating, I think that's a good one, and still the conversation about... Well, we don't talk about representation, but still part of that, still have the slice of Clearlake.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I'm good with the "as-is," and I know that there was talk about representation, and I understand that that's not meant to be, but that there's always invitations that's possible for Supervisors to work together, even if it's outside of their specific jurisdictions. And so I think that that's always a possibility as well.
Are there any other comments? All right. So I think we're at the consensus of the Dam Road and everything else that we've worked on.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right. So we'll close public comment, I think. Where will we go from here?
Close public hearing, and I thank you for being so. Again, this matter, the recommendation, the Option 3, which I saw Lon just save, we will prepare that as the proposed map for the final implementation that will take place November 30th at 9:00 a.m. in a special meeting. We'll prepare it and have it ready for your review and approval at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate... Again, I appreciate all the hard work of board members, and whoever said Lon is a rock star was undervaluing him, and as is Matthew. It's been an absolute pleasure to work with both of them, and you have real stars on your staff.
Yes, thank you very much for your hard work.
This is Matthew, and I just have to say what a privilege it's been to work with both Margaret and Karen Walker of Prentice Long. They've been incredible partners and collaborators.
All right. With that, it looks like we'll go ahead and adjourn?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Have a good evening. Drive safe.